Unfortunately, public health at the moment dictates that we host this meeting virtually, but hopefully only for a few weeks. Please note that our meetings will continue to be available and streamed live on the city's YouTube page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. Now we'll begin as we do every meeting with the pledge of the flag, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. First, we'll consider the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the meeting of the mayor and common council on January 10th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So.
There's a motion by Mr. Dayoff and a second by Mr. Kabachi. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, the ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. The minutes are approved. We have one presentation this evening, and we're glad to welcome Mr. Graham Dodge, CEO of the Mid-Atlantic Gigabit Innovation Collaboratory, better known as MAGIC. Mr. Dodge, good to see you, and congratulations on your nice new office space on Main Street.
Thank you very much. Okay, I will share my screen. Oh, oh, I see, you're using a, okay, all right. Let's do it this way then. Hi, I'm Graham Dodge, I'm the CEO, I'm the executive director of Mid-Atlantic Gigabit Innovation Collaboratory. Go ahead to the next slide. If it's easier, I can share my screen. If you can enable screen sharing for me, I have the most recent updated version of this, and I can control it and everything, and it'll be sound too. It looks like you're in a PDF copy. Okay. Very quick updates. We are in a new office space. Thank you, Greg, for acknowledging that. We're in it tonight. I'm actually joined by the CEO of Dynamic Dimension Technologies, Carl Ladler, who's here in the office with me. And it's, yes, it's a new office and community space for MAGIC here on Main Street, at 38 West Main Street, across from the City Administration Building, and right between Raphael's and Genie Bird Baking Company. We recently applied for $1 million in federal grants for the autonomous corridor project, which I will get into later in this presentation. And I wanted to start with an update about the esports arena master design plan, which has been funded in part by the city of Westminster and by McDaniel College. Go ahead to the next slide, please. And then what you should be seeing is an animation of the esports arena. Can you go back? There's actually an animation we're playing. I don't think you can do that in this format. If I can share my screen and control the presentation, I can do that for us. Or if you click that, yeah, I saw you have a YouTube link there. Yeah, if you go back and click on that photo, it should launch the browser for YouTube, and you can play it from there. Would it be possible for me to have screen sharing privileges so I can control the presentation?
Hold on one moment, I'll be right with you with that.
Been a while since we've had a virtual meeting, Mr. Dodge.
Yes. We've been furiously updating this presentation all day, and so it was built in Google Slides, so there's a live copy of it. And there are a couple of different videos embedded that I'd like to be able to share with the mayor and council this evening. While we are doing that, I can elaborate on some of these items here. The federal grant for $1 million is for the Federal Transit Authority. It was an application opportunity that did not require a municipality to be matching on that, so we were able to get different vendors to commit to in-kind matching on that one. So unlike the RACE grant that we attempted to apply for, that was a $14 million opportunity this past summer, where the city needed to commit to matching it, this one was allowed for nonprofits and other agencies similar to nonprofits to do that themselves, which is fairly unique. You may also notice that we have a new logo. The upper left-hand corner there is the new MAGIC logo. We've actually dropped Mid-Atlantic Gigabit Innovation Collaboratory as a tagline. They're now featuring the three focus areas for MAGIC, which are innovation, education, and incubation. And that new G, stylized G, took a lot of effort and is representative of a turning point for MAGIC, new intersections, new areas of interest, and also stands out better when you print it.
So while we're waiting, tell us more about your space, your new space.
Well, thank you. Yeah, it's the former Harvest and Natural space. And so for anyone who was a customer of Harvest and Naturals, please know that we did not kick them out. This space became available after they moved to Town Mall. They have a much larger space there now. And so we are very proud to have been doing tenant improvements with all of our volunteers. You can see Val and John Dick there in the picture, helping us with the floors. We have Jason Stanball there painting the wall. Several others came out and helped us.
Mr. President.
Mayor.
Can I ask a quick question while we're waiting?
Sure.
Um, Mr. Dodge, I was just curious, because you said, so you were calling it a new office and community space. Do you envision workshops or other things using that space for the community? Is that falling on, is that something new that you're hoping to have in this area as well?
Absolutely. We want to be available for workshops for students, for seniors, workshops about cybersecurity, workshops about game development, also available to entrepreneurs through our One Million Cups program. So there'll be some version of coworking that will be permissible here at this location as well.
That'll be really nice, because you didn't have that at your other location, correct? It was a little bit more difficult.
No, we were hidden away, the previous location, and didn't have the space, but now we're front and center here on Main Street.
You had to access your office through Genie Birds, which was not all that bad.
Correct, that's correct. It made for a nice relationship with Bernie and the occasional free butterhorn. He would correct me and say it was a lot more than the occasional free butterhorn, I'm sure. Let me see if there's any, you can also notice in the rendering there. So that rendering or that image is not the actual window yet. That's a photoshopped image of what we intend the graphics to look like on the window, and you'll see all those dimensions. Those are there because we are submitting that image to the zoning department for approval to make sure we're allowed to have that sort of square footage of graphics on the window.
Glad to see somebody's following the sign warnings.
Yes, I learned my lesson with the mall banner. So, well, we'll do it right this time. I worked in live television production for, I don't know, five years or so, and I can only imagine what's happening behind the scenes right now. So thank Doug and Sarah and everybody else for your effort.
Maybe while they're doing that. Right on cue, and I'm going to host disabled. Doug, it looks like you still, I'm still not. Just kidding. We've got some behind-the-scenes stuff going on there, Graham. I assume that you want to wait and not give the rest of your presentation, or is it okay if we swing back to the esports video after you?
Sarah, I just was able to make you co-host.
Want to wait and not give the rest of your presentation? Or is it, here we go. Swing back to the esports video after.
Sarah, I just was able to make you co-host.
Okay.
So does that mean you'll be able to make me a co-host as well, Sarah?
I don't think so, but I'm gonna go ahead and show your video.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm gonna mute.
I don't think so, but I'm gonna go ahead and show your video.
Okay, thank you. So there is some music that accompanies this that you're not hearing. It's okay, it's just, you know, sort of setting the mood. That was the VIP gamer entrance. This is the Gamer Hall of Fame. The idea here is that there will be screenshots and screen recordings of various highlights from different gamers who perform in this facility. To the right is a 20,000-square-foot space that's part of this, and to the left is another 20,000 square foot that could be expanded upon. We are now looking down the hallway back to the interior mall entrance that would be there. And now we are entering the actual esports arena. That's our audience check-in on the right. We have a head pre-function space, concessions and merchandising availability, could also be a small venue. And here is the main esports arena and concert venue, could also be a conference space. Of course, this benefits entirely from gigabit fiber. Much of the cost for this facility will be in all the high-tech equipment. And then because of the ceiling height there at the mall, we can actually add this mezzanine level for private events and other rooms. There's a VIP stairwell that is on the backside of this wall. Underneath this hallway that we're on, this mezzanine is all storage and server hosting closets. We're noting that there's stadium seating on three-quarters of the perimeter. We have VIP mezzanine lounge. We're heading into the bar and cocktail lounge. That's the stairs to the right that goes back down to the VIP entrance. And the emotional music concludes here with "Let the Games Begin." And the updated version of this also included McDaniel College's logo. So McDaniel College is now also sponsoring the development of these materials for me to go take and raise potentially private equity funding, other partners, whether that be Ravens Gaming League and others who have signaled interest in naming rights to the arena. In terms of going back to the presentation, we can go back to that PDF now.
Mr. Barber, are you gonna pull that back up?
And Sarah and Doug, if by any chance you have that Google Slides link, you can go back to that any point for the full updated version. I don't know if that's a security risk or anything, but.
Graham, we're gonna be working off of the PDF. Just give us a second.
All right, can you advance ahead, please? All right, one more. All right, so there are detailed floor plans to this master design plan. I don't expect anyone to read the fine print. Go ahead, move on. Just again, some of the crisper, you know, shots there. Obviously, we are tying in the autonomous corridor to this, and we have a couple more renderings there. And thank you to Spritz and Associates for providing these assets. Another slide ahead, please. And one more. Okay, so for your fiscal year '23 city budget consideration, these are my recommendations and requests. For the Westminster Esports Arena development, we are estimating that to be somewhere between $6 and $8 million as rendered. Doesn't mean we can't dial that back by changing some of the technology specifications, but we think it would be reasonable for the city to consider being a partner in this project in a new LLC tentatively called Westminster Esports Arena LLC. This could be channeled through Potentially Town Center Development Corporation so that any return on investment can come back to Town Center Development Corporation as potential evergreen funding for other investments by the city. I estimated, you know, 10 to, or sorry, 5% to 10% of the total development cost is potential investment by the city, but that really could change, or that could be obviously depending on what the city wants to commit to and based on how much other funds I'm able to raise. But I want to make sure that's in your consideration for fiscal year '23 as we go out to start raising the funds for that revitalization of Town Mall. And something that, for those of you who went to the Good Game Fest or have been following and tracking the progress on this esports arena concept, you know it's a huge market opportunity. For MAGIC's annual funding, the city of Westminster generously provides $80,000 a year to MAGIC. We are requesting a $20,000-year increase this year to $100,000 to support our increased role in the city's economic development and to cover increases in staffing and facilities. And then we're making a hard recommendation for budgeting ARPA funds for the autonomous corridor Phase II project, of which the entire project is eligible for ARPA funding. And then some of those funds could even be reserved for matching co-investments so that you're not just spending your money, your met, other funds are being used to match the city at least a dollar for dollar. Please go to the next slide. All right, now we're gonna dive into the autonomous corridor. Go ahead to the next slide. So I want to start with showing you a couple photos of different downtown Main Streets. When we talk about economic development, especially technology-driven economic development, I want to make sure it's clear that we're not talking about, oh, can you go back? I'm sorry. That we're not talking about tearing down buildings or, you know, ruining the historic preservation of our historic city. Again, if you can go back real quick. And. Well, okay, we'll just stay on this slide. So the point of that slide was that the picture on the right, of course, you recognize the Babylon Building and Pomeroy Jewelry, that's Westminster. The one on the left was downtown Mountain View, California, home of Google, Facebook. So the point being, technology-driven economic development, like what was seen in Silicon Valley, does not mean, you know, it doesn't have to happen in a big city. It doesn't mean tearing down buildings. It actually, the opposite, preserves them. It provides sort of a hidden infrastructure and economy that, you know, doesn't always happen with other types of industrial development. So the reason for this is, the reason for the comparison is that Westminster and Mountain View, as you've heard me talk about in my other Silicon Main Street presentations, we both have good soil, to use some agrarian references here in Carroll County. There's low cost of living, high quality of life. That was the case for Mountain View too, back in the 1950s and 60s, when the silicon semiconductor manufacturers moved in. There is a workforce of defense contractors, same in Mountain View back then as it is here in Carroll County. I don't know how much of a delay there may be at this point. I'm so sorry. Sarah, are you controlling this?
You asked us to back up to this shot, right?
No, you can proceed to the slide, the other one, the next one. Yep, and so, and then we have colleges co-invested in workforce development. Mountain View had Stanford, we've got McDaniel, and, you know, there's plenty of research opportunities still to be developed here with Johns Hopkins, for example, and other research universities in the area. But we have to sow some seeds, the seeds being infrastructure improvements, being public transit investments, tax incentives, strategic zones. Go to the next slide. I'm still seeing the former slide, there we go. So let's talk about our motto, "Where History Meets Tomorrow." So Westminster, so what's the difference between Mountain View, California and Westminster in terms of the history here? You know, obviously Westminster is a much older city. The railroad helped Westminster boom in the late 1800s. We had seven hotels and 18 saloons. I was pretty flabbergasted when I saw that statistics on our own city website about the history. We attracted prominent families whose names we still recognize today, as well as industry and tourists. But then in 1960s, we discontinued passenger rail service, or someone did. I don't know who discontinued it, but it got discontinued. And then in the 80s, we saw 795 being developed, but then it didn't go all the way to Carroll County, for whatever reason. These transportation gaps caused disengagement in downtown, unfortunately. Creates a lack of data as well in terms of population and economic development. Local workforces are commuting 60 to 90 minutes away, turning us into a bedroom suburb, and these economic losses lead to addiction, crime, truancy, and poor health outcomes. Next slide, please. So let's talk about tomorrow, and the "History Meets Tomorrow" motto, right? For us, that tomorrow is Silicon Main Street. It's embracing this technology-driven economic development plan to leverage all of these assets that we have and put them to work for us and for the community. That includes our investment, our $16 million investment in gigabit fiber, leveraging that technology to the best of its abilities, leveraging the expertise of our workforce, which includes former General Dynamics Robotics employees who are now working for other robotics companies here in the area and starting their own businesses, just like Shockley and Fairchild employees did back in the day in Silicon Valley when they created, then went on to create Intel and other big, huge global technology companies. We want to then use this as incentive to reverse the flow of commuters, have more people working and eating on Main Street, retain Gen Z with all the cool stuff that's gonna be happening here, and all that means net positive job growth. And we want to create an infrastructure for innovation and data collection to support the technology companies that are here and to bring new ones here and to ultimately increase real estate revenue. Next slide, please. Just to acknowledge that image there, Exploration Commons, which is also another asset we've got. Okay, strategic investment, something to keep in mind for city council and the mayor here this evening as we talk through this autonomous corridor project. For every $1 spent on public transportation, city business sales increase by $3. This 1 to 3 ratio is also observed in several studies when spending money on government technology and the cost savings that are realized from those investments. Next slide, please. So what is an autonomous corridor? Well, there's two ways to sort of answer that question from a technology perspective and a goals perspective. Technology-wise, we're talking about connected and autonomous vehicle fleet for public transit. We're talking about a digital twin municipal technology infrastructure. We're talking about connected vehicle-to-infrastructure wireless edge network on top of symmetric gigabit fiber network, the goals of which are to provide door-to-door on-demand transit, autonomous transit anywhere within the corridor, shared real-time surveillance and simulations with public works, public utilities, and public safety, future-proofing for drone delivery, drone freight, and urban air mobility. Next slide, please. That's Bernie Vogel's hand putting the Future Shuttle Stop sticker on his window at Genie Bird. All right, so Phase 1 is complete. So we kicked off Phase 1 with a ripping-cutting event on May 20th this past year at the Socksdale Garage. Great event, huge turnout. We caught it right in that sort of lull in the pandemic between, I guess, the first wave and Delta. Who knows how that was able to get pulled off? But thank you to Dr. Becker, it was her, we threw her right in the deep end to speak at her very first event as mayor. So thank you, Mona, for that. Phase 1 cost us about $25,000 in cash, that included the event, included the scanning services, plus another about $100,000 or more in-kind services provided by Dynamic Dimension Technologies and other people who contributed to that Phase 1, which includes live demonstrations. So several people got a chance to ride the Peron Robotics AV Star. Includes LiDAR scanning, some initial laser radar scanning of the city, and some aerial scanning. We came away with a virtual simulation video I will show you, I will share with you this evening, and a ton of vehicle and market research for grant applications. Other accomplishments, we are now on, literally on the map for the Maryland Department of Transportation's Connected and Autonomous Vehicle Working Group, whereas when we first engaged with them, we weren't. We were asked to present to the American Road and Transportation Builders Association Conference in Long Island and the Association of General Contractors Conference up in Saratoga Springs. So we're being nationally recognized by these organizations and others as a leading case study in the future of transportation, which has given us national media attention. We also were a grant award partner on a TEDCO grant with KICK Robotics to conduct autonomous soil testing and water sampling in and around Westminster. And we established relationships with Johns Hopkins Applied Physics Lab and their new Institute of Assured Autonomy, which is the most funded initiative in Johns Hopkins' history. It was kicked off with a $30 million investment by the university. Next slide, please. So we attempted to also answer some questions going into Phase 1. I'll try to get to these quickly. So the first question is, how many vehicles is it gonna take to serve a population of, say, 20,000 residents here in Westminster? Given that we don't want them waiting too long, we want to be a better service than what they're used to. So we concluded that we need at least four short-range vehicles and four long-range extended vehicles. Each had different capabilities. The purple line on the map there shows the short range. The green line shows the proposed corridor for the long range that connects Carroll Lutheran Village all the way to Carroll Community College. What is the market opportunity for virtual tolls and digital licensing? We were just on a call today with Maryland Department of Transportation's Working Group, and there was a company in DC called Locomation, Locomation, that does autonomous truck deliveries. And we're talking about, you know, what is it gonna take to, you know, when you have an autonomous tractor-trailer coming through town, and that's coming soon, go into Penguin Random House or any one of our manufacturing or distribution companies here in Westminster? We need to have sort of like a harbor, you know, what do you call a harbor pilot, right? I got Carl here with me, you know, to guide them through, almost like a tractor beam, you know? So the autonomous vehicle, the freight vehicle enters the corridor, and we provide safe passage to exactly where they need to go. We can charge a toll for that. The data of the digital twin can be charged a licensing fee to Toyota, to Ford, whoever wants to virtually test their vehicles here in this environment and do research and development for these use cases. There's also speculation around, you know, the metaverse economy and what a digital twin of a city can actually mean for the metaverse. I'll leave it at that, but also, you know, gaming development and licensing fees from that, from being able to provide an entire city modeled for a game. What are the grid resiliency net metering benefits from a fleet of EVs? This was a question we had because we thought, you know, if we had a large enough fleet, we could actually have grid resiliency, but Maryland, the state of Maryland does not allow for that currently. But that'll be something that hopefully will change. Next slide, please. Continuing on research questions, what is the opportunity for technology tourism? So there will be a novelty to obviously having a fleet of autonomous shuttles available here in Westminster. We looked at other technology tourism case studies. Kansas City has one with their Startup Village, which was the first. Kansas City has one with their startup village, which was the first square block in the entire country to get fiber. It was with Google Fiber at the time. And the startup companies that started there and were invested in are now, they can sort of trace their genealogy over the last 10 years to companies that are now valued over $1 billion. They're still being built in Kansas City. So there's like this half a dozen or more very successful technology companies that evolved from that early investment and that attention. And that, you know, that attracted them there. And then Yellowstone National Park had two Ollies over the summer for three months. They served 10,000 passengers, 4,000 trips, 2,100 miles. They conducted that, which by the way, was well more than they expected. They didn't expect so many people to ride it. They also conducted a survey asking what people's impression of autonomous vehicles was ahead of time. And 65% of the people getting on the shuttle thought, you know, they felt safe. The other percentage did not. They were concerned. By the time they had gotten off the shuttle, 95% of the people felt safe with autonomous transportation. How will our autonomous solutions impact transit equity? So here in Westminster, we learned that less than 1% of the households use public transportation, given just the lack of convenience options for them. Meanwhile, greater than 25% are elderly or disabled. So there's a huge latent demand for some services like this. Also, these services would provide improved door-to-door access for a hard-to-reach residence. Some of the current transportation options won't go down certain narrow streets or alleyways because they don't want to get sort of stuck back there. So the form factor makes a difference. And some of the autonomous shuttles that we're looking at are small enough to navigate those with no problem. This would increase connectivity for employment opportunities with Burke and Miller Center, et cetera. And then I don't have to tell you how many times I've seen people try to cross 140 at Angler. And I saw a guy walking down Angler carrying a flat-screen TV that he just purchased from Walmart. He was walking home with a flat screen. He didn't have a car, obviously. And then I saw an elderly gentleman trying to cross 140. He got about halfway and he turned back around because he knew he wasn't going to make it all the way. So safe passage on autonomous transit system also means saving people's lives. Next slide, please. Go down. And one more. So these are the potential utilizers of the corridor. A lot of representation here. We have official letters of intent now from Penmar, the CEO of Penmar himself has written us a letter of intent and support. We have a letter from the Boys and Girls Club of Westminster saying that they support the project. We have a letter from Spectrum Support Services that are not mentioned on this slide, but they also have residents and programs here in Westminster. They would utilize it. And then we have, just word came in this afternoon that the Director of Special Education for Carroll County Public Schools, Nicholas Shockney, has committed to sending us a letter of intent as well for using the autonomous shuttle services if they prove to be a cost-efficient option for Carroll County Public Schools' special needs students. Yep, keep going back up. All right, now go back down to the BGE slide. So here are some quick use cases. BGE, we've been talking with them about how they would use the digital twin technology and infrastructure. They said they would use it for virtual training. They said that they would use it for monitoring vegetation encroachment. This is because the autonomous corridor and the digital twin presumes a network of sensors that are constantly monitoring and providing cloud point data back to the central mainframe. And they would be able to measure vegetation encroachment because of that. Yes, thank you. And so they would also be willing to barter with the city to reduce fees paid to BGNE for using their utility poles. So Jeffrey Glass estimated this to be about $20,000 per year. That was me putting him on the spot. So maybe that number has changed. But that would be at least a starting point. And it also provides the city some new leverage in terms of negotiations with BGE for future development needs. Next slide, please. The owner of Molly's Cafe, I met with her. She was one of the first people that asked for a Future Shuttle Stop sticker. She told me all about the concern about how McDaniel students don't make it all the way down to her end of Main Street. They don't have the transportation options. Some of them don't even feel safe going as far as Johansen's. So we know that from doing a survey with McDaniel students. So we know that autonomous shuttle service on Main Street connecting McDaniel to the east side of town and the short-range vehicles would absolutely benefit establishments like Molly's Cafe. Next slide, please. Race, Pace and Run More, both nationally recognized brands in their own right. What happens when more people start taking public transit is you get more people walking, running, cycling. So that, so the autonomous corridor project benefits these two businesses as well. It also provides them a means in the digital twin technology to more easily map and plan races, cycling events, walk-a-thons, all that kind of good stuff. All that could be made available through the city to businesses. Next slide, please. The Socksdale Property Development. So obviously, there's a lot of interest in building a boutique luxury hotel, Socksdale Property. If we had a digital twin in place, we could simulate the entire construction process and planning process of that development and realize probably some pretty instant cost savings in terms of saving money on whatever headaches might emerge. You would be able to simulate traffic patterns as a result of having to close down one of the busiest intersections in our town for the sake of that development. So not to mention the fact that you've got, you know, increased tourism from the autonomous corridor itself. They're going to need places to stay. If there's an esports arena, they're going to need places to stay. And they're going to place their way to get from that hotel to Town Mall to the airport, which will have expanded passenger service soon. So all of these things are working in concert with each other and would be able to serve the needs of the development there for the hotel. I don't know if we skipped a slide. Can you just go back? Okay, yes, go back one more down. Sorry, the one with the Penmar logo. And the arc. Guessing we're working on like a five-second delay here. There we go, right there. So the special needs community has come out and forced, thanks to Vince Bruceo, the efforts of Vince Bruceo, who's the parent of an autistic child himself. He's a real estate agent in town. Many of you know him. He developed a comic book with his daughter famously. Anyway, about COVID. And he has taken upon himself to go out and explain and present the autonomous corridor project to the organizations that he's involved in. And the response from them has been overwhelming. It's why we have a letter of intent from the CEO of Penmar. It's why we have a letter of support from Spectrum Support, so on, so forth. And, you know, as I mentioned before, you know, we have Carroll County Public School's Special Education Director also making that commitment now, too. So not only are they facing labor shortages among their own transportation options, but then the transportation options that currently exist demand that they maintain their own fleets. If they didn't have to maintain their own fleets, that would be a huge cost savings for them. Cost savings that could be passed on to the city through access to the autonomous corridor shuttles. They will be ADA compliant, so we are talking about fully ADA compliant vehicles for this population. Families of adult special needs kids will be looking for real estate in this corridor because they want equitable access to transportation for their adult children. And then future extensions of the corridor could actually connect these communities to be more engaged with downtown Westminster as a destination. Meaning as we go outside the corridor, outside the city, you have more people coming to the city because of the availability of that, because the corridor is bringing them to the city. Next slide, please. And then I think this is the final of the use cases slides. I just want to share with you the technology companies that benefit. You know, we hear a lot, you know, whenever there's a development happening in town, you always hear, oh, they didn't use city contractors. They didn't use county contractors, right? Well, guess what? You've got technology companies here that can provide services for the development of the digital twin and the autonomous corridor. All aspects of it, IT infrastructure, digital twin development, cybersecurity, autonomous vehicle systems. It's all here. We don't have to go far, which is why we explored this opportunity in the first place. DDT estimates that with the future R&amp;D development dollars potentially coming through other universities into this corridor that they would expect adding 50 to 100 new high-paying technology jobs in the next three years. This would also draw more technology companies here and it becomes exponential. That would support local tech contractors who can then also assist in development of the corridor itself. Next slide, please. All right, partnerships with Johns Hopkins. So on December 20th, 2021, we had the first meeting at Exploration Commons. One of their meeting rooms was the first one that was had there and it was with some of the illustrious people from Applied Physics Lab and the Institute of Assured Autonomy. As a result of that meeting, we now have information that they are applying for National Science Foundation research dollars. Now, as a research university, they have a different access to these kinds of funds than the typical nonprofit or academic institution, which means it's sort of open-ended. So they are writing into their proposals to National Science Foundation, they want to develop the research and development in the Westminster Autonomous Corridor. This, of course, presumes that there is a Westminster autonomous corridor and transit system. They also call out Dynamic Dimension Technologies, our local partner here, as being fully capable of this work. So that in of itself is a huge step forward for this project. And then on top of all that, the icing on the cake is one of the senior engineers from Johns Hopkins Applied Physics Lab informed us that he and his wife are shopping for real estate here in Westminster because he wants to be here to start a cybersecurity business for autonomous networking in the autonomous corridor. Next slide, please. So these are just some quick images of what we accomplished in phase one. This is the ground LiDAR scanning. That's my car wrapped in the graphics. That's Carl driving my car with a LiDAR camera on top of it. And that purple image next to it is what the LiDAR data looks like. Next slide, please. We worked with our Carroll Composite Squadron of the Civil Air Patrol to conduct drone aerial scanning. This is no small feat. You have to get approval by the FAA, have to get approval by the US Air Force. But these teams came together very quickly and we scanned that area that you see on the right there, which is that red box between Manchester's at Manchester and Union. And we didn't use a fixed-wing drone in the end, but we got approved for a fixed-wing drone, which is a big deal. Just means that they were all very, very supportive of this. And Dr. Mona Becker was there to show her support as well. Next slide, please. These are some of the images, the stereo photo on the tree. Photogrammetry images from the quadcopter drones that were able to very quickly create a 3D modeling, 3D rendering of the city. This slide is showing the VX Sim software that DDT provides. In this particular series of screenshots, you're seeing the stitching together of the aerial photography scanning as well as the ground LiDAR scanning, all being pulled together. This is the basis for the digital twin that then has physics put in. You could test, you know, ice, wind, rain, sandstorms, volcanic eruptions. We could really put Carl to the test in terms of the physics capabilities of the simulations and exactly what we can simulate, whether we're simulating trucks driving down Main Street or lava flowing down Main Street. Next slide, please. All right, now Sarah, I don't know if you can actually jump to, you might be able to see if you hover over this image or if Doug does, there should be a YouTube link here as well. If not, I can just talk through it. It looks like you can click on it. Your cursor turned into a little hand. In which case, if you can share the video, it should go right to YouTube and open up a browser.
Graham, why don't you talk us through it?
Okay, so what you would see, and this is available on Magic's YouTube channel, I believe, I think it's public. I'll make it public if it's not, is an Ollie in the rendered virtual twin of what Carl's team had scanned so far. And you would see it kind of driving down Main Street, interacting with the traffic lights. And it's not an animation like the esports arena one was. This is actually a simulation of these systems talking to each other. So they position cameras in the virtual twin and they kind of hit the hit start and this autonomous system starts driving. And you even see it kind of going up and down slight, you know, bumps and things because all of those little bumps have been detailed by the point cloud data of the scan, even going over the railroad tracks at 27. You would be able to see that motion as well. Next slide, please. So in summary, the digital twin and autonomous corridor uses are, it's an infrastructure for connected autonomous transit and drone delivery, which means also beyond line-of-sight certifications, which is a big deal for drone aviation. Because we have sensors now, everything is visible effectively in the digital twin of the city. There's data gathering and diagnostics made available to public safety and public works. There are simulations, assessments and forecasting for planning and zoning. You've got animations of detours at your disposal. You've got changing traffic patterns at your disposal. We're going thousands of simulations, construction projects like Socksdale. So this is the kind of thing that you put it in place before all those things. And all of those things benefit from having the digital twin in place. Then you have the wireless infrastructure that gets built out for the connectivity, also supports city wifi if we choose to make that available to the public. So all that work would be done. And then, of course, that continues to promote the advantages of gigabit fiber, bringing new revenue streams to the city, creating high-paying tech jobs, supporting local businesses, stimulating economic development. Next slide, please. So for your federal ARPA budget consideration, you've got $18 million. I know some of it, I don't know whether or not any of it's been assigned or not, but because this is about infrastructure improvement, it's about transportation infrastructure improvement. It's even about pandemic response because in the world of autonomous transportation, these vehicles can be assigned on the fly, you know, and sanitized for pod-based family needs, special needs, family transportation. The digital twin allows you to do smart routing for emergency vehicles. You could even do simulations of, you know, you know, end-of-times pandemic triaging. That's available to you in the digital twin. What we are recommending that the city budget for fiscal year '23 would be $1.1 million for phase two, which would be mostly the digital twin development that would then be used to attract additional R&amp;D development or investments from third parties like Johns Hopkins would be an example of those that we would expect. That could be up to a $10 million total invested value because of the city's investment of that 1.1 million initially. And then we would say for fiscal years '24 through '26, please consider 2.5 million set aside to be matched by other organizations looking to develop technology here. So that you're not, I'm not saying you would just deploy that 2.5 million across those two other fiscal years. You would set it aside. Other places, other institutions and organizations could come and say, hey, we want to invest this. And then we could say, hey, we have matching dollars or grant proposals, like with the Rays grant over the summer. You know, and Magic then would have the ability to say, yes, we have matching dollars available because oftentimes those matches are required. So we would effectively use that two and a half million to bring in at least 5 million total matched value, if not 15 million. Next slide, please. So for fiscal year '23, for phase two, what you would be getting would be a fully synthesized digital twin of Main Street in this corridor around Main Street between Longwell and John Bond Street, approximately. There would be a city terminal and a seat of the digital twin VX Sim software. I have a picture of a Bloomberg terminal there, just as like a, to give you the idea of what we're talking about. Doesn't necessarily have to be a terminal like that, but that would be effectively what the city would have access to. There would be three upgraded traffic lights to be upgraded to smart traffic lights, which would help immediately with other traffic efficiencies. And then we would have the IT infrastructure built out, including the edge nodes for the autonomous corridor. There would then be a sandbox environment that, you know, for R&amp;D, for research and development by funded third parties, again, Johns Hopkins as an example, to come and actually start to conduct their research and development and spend that capital here on Main Street, buying butterhorns, going to Molly's Cafe, all that good stuff. And then we would finalize phase two with some sort of commemorative demonstration, perhaps at a parade. We could have council, mayor riding an autonomous shuttle at a parade towards the end of phase two. Next slide, please. Phase three and beyond would actually be the deployment of these shuttles for public use. We would be purchasing AV, autonomous vehicle and electric vehicle. We would be purchasing AV autonomous vehicle and electric vehicle, both short range and long range. We would kick off the Savvy Student Program, which is our stewards for autonomous vehicle internships in partnership with McDaniel College, Carroll Community College and Carroll County Public Schools. So licensed drivers would have paid internship opportunities to learn about this technology and be ambassadors to the city. We would expand the digital twin beyond this initial scope and then add additional smart traffic lights throughout the city. The direct benefit alone, fairs, sponsorships, licensing, carbon credits, which Carl can talk more about. You're looking at approximately a million a year at scale. And now you've got indirect benefits as well. You've got reduced damage costs from CO2 emissions, reduced damage costs from NOX emissions, increased business spending, increased government savings. We estimate that to all be worth about $3 million a year. So there's direct benefits, there's indirect. So the next slide, go ahead to the next slide. I have a representation of what this looks like as a financial projection. So you see the immediate first year, all those expenses, right? All that expense in developing the digital twin. The following year, though, you start actually monetizing a little bit. You offset it, it's still, it's still a loss, but in the following year, we start to get to break even. And then as we scale it up and we purchase more vehicles, it becomes self-sustaining and profitable like other. And we, and we, and we have seen use cases where this is the case in other city transit opportunities. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, let's leapfrog ahead. Westminster is perfectly poised to recreate the economic success seen in Silicon Valley towns and to leapfrog ahead of nearby larger cities such as Frederick and Baltimore. Westminster's strategic innovation, investment in fiber, autonomous technology, esports arena will provide an attractive, inclusive and connected community for an economic boon, boom here not seen since the late 1800s. Next slide, please. Okay, so now it's, I have an appendix. We don't have to go into these slides. I know we're short on time. Thank you all very much. I'm happy to answer questions. I have Carl from DDT here to also answer questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Dodge. That was very interesting and some big numbers there, you know, for us to be thinking about here as part of our budget process. Do they have any questions for Mr. Dodge?
Mr. President.
President. Mr. Kavachi.
So first of all, thanks, Mr. Dodge. Appreciate it. I know it's a little bit jerky on the presentation side. So thanks for trying to muddle through that with us. I know you guys spent probably quite a bit of time on that. So thanks. You know, I guess one of the initial questions I would have is the initial, there were $2 amounts, if I remember correctly, it was 1.1 million and then a $2.5 million asked. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, the 2.5 million was money you're asking for us to basically set aside in the form of potential matching funds for future grants. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and then the 1.1 that you're asking us for, that is to create the digital twin predominantly. That's what that money is for. So that would help you then go out to potentially market that technology so that you can get more grant funding and bring in other partners to help do things that you want to do. Is that, is that, do I understand that correctly?
That's, so there's a little bit of nuance there. So we are not, Magic is not asking for these funds for ourselves to spend as we wish on this development. This would be the city's spending on the contractors directly to develop that digital twin technology. They would then own that asset. As that asset gets invested in by other research and development dollars, the city would then generate the revenues for itself from those activities.
And I know you talked a little bit about that, so I don't want to make you rehash everything, but that asset can be used, for example, I think one of the things that kind of caught my attention, if a automobile manufacturer decided they want to come and test some self-driving vehicles, we could provide them that information and they can bring those vehicles in here, drive them around because they have the technology and the connectivity needed to do that. Is that?
So essentially, the city of Westminster becomes a municipal proving ground for autonomous connected autonomous technology.
Okay. All right, good. I, that's, I think I understood what you were telling us. So thank, thank you very much. It was very interesting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you again for the presentation and thank you, Mr. Kavachi, for the clarifying questions. I had written down pretty much the same thing. Mr. President, may we have a copy of this presentation? I'd like to study it. It was done extremely well. I'd really appreciate it.
It seems like the city administrator must have a copy and we'll ask her to distribute it to everybody.
It was a great presentation. I really appreciated it. Thank you for all your hard work and putting it together.
Mr. President.
I also know what it's like to do live TV, so I appreciated what you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Ms. Gilbert.
Yes, and I apologize to Councilman Dayhoff. I kind of butted it there as I thought he had stopped talking and he kind of, I think it was just a break in my audio. But thank you. As a, as a Magic Board liaison, I think it's important that we, as a council, kind of take some time and think. I think it's important at this time to discuss this whole presentation and everything that Mr. Dodge talked to us fully and after we digest all the information, kind of come back and, and give Mr. Dodge and the Magic Board our decision or at least some sort of direction. He's put a lot of time, so has everyone else. There's been a lot of people putting time and attention into this project. And I just think it's really important that we take some time to direct our thoughts on this to Graham so that he knows how he can move forward and, and what to do with this project and where we're all kind of at as a group. So I just kind of wanted to, to, to make that point and see if we can kind of schedule a time that we can discuss this further.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Yes, we certainly will do that.
Mr. President, the only thing I want to add is just kind of putting in kind of grand contexts is, you know, we're, we should, the Finance Committee is going to be starting to work on the upcoming budget. And so we have, obviously, everybody on council knows, we have all these different competing wants and needs. And so we have to kind of think about this. I mean, it's very interesting, very fascinating stuff, but in context to all the other needs too, and really kind of do some soul searching about where we deploy the money that we do have for the best use for their citizens. And I don't know what that answer is right now, because quite frankly, I think we all need some time to digest everything and really think it through. And we need to do that on the Finance Committee and then do that through the process of coming to the, the whole council as well. So.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hoff. Yes, certainly, I was going to say that, you know, this is a matter that I think Finance Committee is going to have to have some conversation about and, you know, perhaps invite Mr. Graham into, to, you know, discuss some more of the details. You know, I think that we've heard a pretty high-level concept here. You know, my understanding is that Magic's role is to, you know, come up with some ideas to try and push them forward. It's try and make some of the connections that make them possible. And I think Mr. Graham, Mr. Dodge does a great job of doing that as he has on a number of issues over the last couple of years. And the network of people that he's able to reach out to is pretty impressive. You know, some thought would have to be given to, you know, what this looks like in reality. Yeah, I mean, obviously, I guess, obviously, I shouldn't say obviously, but my presumption is that Magic doesn't want to get into the transit business, you know, that it's not there and that's not their expectations. They're going to manage and operate a fleet of autonomous vehicles. Somebody's going to have to. And so that's, that's, that's something we've got to talk about. How does, what does that look like? Who is responsible for owning and operating and managing and maintaining and, and, you know, crewing to the extent necessary and all those kinds of things, you know, whatever fleet of vehicles, you know, comes into being. What's the revenue structure look like? How does that work? You know, do people, when people get on the autonomous vehicle, you know, how are they paying for a ride? Are they, are they, you know, how does that, what does that look like? Are we, you know, there's, there's got to be a number of different ways to do that, but I don't know what it looks like at the moment, especially if there's nobody on board to take a ticket or to take, you know, a payment from them. So again, lots of questions that, you know, we have to discuss, you know, we're not going to get into those things now, but I think that, you know, those are some of the kind of things we need to talk about before the city would make any kind of a financial commitment on the autonomous corridor operation itself. The digital twin issue is a separate issue in some ways and very interesting. It creates a lot of opportunities by itself for Westminster. You know, to be a proving ground for some of these things, I mean, perhaps some, as you said, you know, driverless vehicles doing deliveries, you know, makes some sense here. Not sure, you know, maybe that's something that Amazon wants to deploy in Westminster, you know, instead of people driving the little vans around. Maybe they're deploying, you know, some sort of technology that, you know, vans drop, drive by and they, they jettison your package towards your door. I don't know how that works, but it's an op, it's an option. Who knows? Anyway, lots to discuss, lots to think about. And, you know, I think what we need to do is find some time in a smaller group to sit down and have some of these conversations and learn some of this. You know, get, get some more of Mr. Dodge's thinking on these issues, because I'm sure he's been, you know, staying up nights thinking about a lot of these things. And, and we'd like to know more. So anybody else have any questions on it?
Mr. President, can I just jump in real quick?
Yes, please do.
Um, so I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Dodge, for the presentation. You know that I've, I've been a fan of Magic and your initiatives and so forth in town. Um, one of the things, just to follow up on what Councilman Member Kavachi had asked as well. And what I was happy to hear during the presentation this evening was the assets that the city would gain through, through these endeavors. And, and I think in the past, that all wasn't very clear, sometimes in the presentations. And, you know, one of the things that I'd like to talk to you, and I know we can do this in a small group as well, is a little bit more of that sandbox idea. Because to me, that is such a powerful concept to, for economic development and to attract businesses and things to this area is that, that 3D overlay and things, then that, that sort of virtual map that, that businesses can use when they come in. So thank you for that, your attention to that in, in the presentation this evening. And I was also very glad to hear, well, to go back to the esports arena, that was the very first thing that, that you talked about as well with that partnership with McDaniel, which is, which is really nice. And then some of those, those other opportunities that are coming online for that. So I was glad to see the rendering of the inside of that facility as well. So very nice presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hoff.
The only thing I was going to add is, you know, the digital twin idea is, while it's related to the autonomous vehicle concept, is really kind of a, also a separate issue unto itself, because that has a lot of use that's beyond just the autonomous vehicle corridor. So I think that's something that maybe people are thinking that we would just do the digital twin for that, but the digital twin has a lot of other purposes as well besides just the vehicle purpose. So.
Right, very true.
Mr. President, anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi.
You know, I had a thought, listening to us just kind of bantering about this, and it dawned on me, you know, we have these committees that we have formed and each of those committees has a role that it plays in terms of kind of liaison with the departments. And in a couple of cases, we even have representatives that sit on other outside organizations like the Arts Council. We have Representative Mr. Dayhoff to the Arts Council, for example, because we do provide some funding there, just like we do with Magic. Maybe one of the things we ought to give some consideration to, and I know we have our Fiber Committee. I don't know if it would make sense to roll this into that. It might, because they're, they're not the same thing, but maybe it could be a, a committee that, that manages a couple of things. But, you know, I, I think if we're going to be serious about this and give it serious consideration, we probably need to bring it down to a little bit smaller group where the mayor and maybe one or two council members have some regular, direct, ongoing communication, but can then come back to the larger group, for instance, during our budget work session and be more educated, because it's tough probably for all of us to, just, just like in the departments, we can't all know everything all the time. It just gets unwieldy. But I'm not suggesting that that's the course of action here, but maybe just a consideration for us to, to think about. I know that's adding a whole, you know, potentially adding another committee. But again, we might be able to roll it into that already existing private committee. So just, just a thought. I'm just throwing it out there, Mr. President.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kavachi. I had already been thinking about that and I, you know, we have a Technology Committee on the council. And I, my thought was that between that Technology Committee and the Finance Committee, we're covering kind of both ends of this, and I think that's a great place to start. I know other council members are going to be very interested in this issue, so it's going to be something that we're going to have to provide an opportunity for others to, you know, to get a lot of communication on and be able to, you know, know what's going on and be able to, you know, share their thoughts as well. So, so we're going to make sure that everybody gets a chance to participate in this. If we go down this path, you know, or to the extent that we go down this path, I should say. You know, it's certainly going to be, you know, have a big impact on the city, you know, for years and, and, and in many ways that we can't even fathom at the moment. So it's certainly something that we're all going to want to, you know, be able to share our thinking on it and help shape. So we will make sure that we create the opportunity to do that. I'll talk with the mayor and the city administrator and we'll get back to you all, you know, with, you know, some thoughts on how we're going to proceed in the short term. And then, you know, we'll, with the long term, take care of itself. All right, is that, that's agreeable, everybody? Very good. All right, well, Mr. Dodge, again, thank you very much. You left us a lot, a lot to think about and a lot to talk about. And we'll be doing both. And a lot of that with you over the next several weeks. So thanks very much again. Thank you very much. The appendix to the, to the slides. Okay. So now we will move on from there to, let's see, next is a report from the mayor. Mayor Becker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to keep it short. I had a number of things written out, but I think we have a full agenda ahead of us this evening. So I'm just going to just very briefly update one thing. I gave a very well-received presentation at the Women's Club of Westminster and thank you to Mr. Dayhoff for the article that appeared in the Carroll County Times over the weekend. I spoke about Wakefield, the Pure Water Initiative and some other city initiatives that, that we have ongoing. One of the things that they are interested in, and one of the members will be doing actually a, undertaking a fundraiser for our B City USA initiative. And so I've put them in touch with the Carroll County Beekeepers Association for that. But just to give the council a heads up, one of the questions that they did raise when I was talking to them was what are our plans for the clubhouse at Wakefield? So that's not something we need to discuss this evening. I know it came up in a committee meeting I was in earlier this week and I think with some funding for Wakefield on the horizon. That's something that we're going to be probably want to address at some point in time within the next maybe two years or so. But one of the questions was what are our plans for that clubhouse? Um, other than that, I'm just going to keep it short and I'm going to let you guys move on. I'm sure there'll be lots of discussions about some things later. Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And now we'll move on to reports from standing committees. The Arts Council update will go to Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to share with everyone how exciting it is to work with the new director, Lynn Griffith. She's a breath of fresh air. It's exciting to talk with her and work with her and, and look at out-of-the-box solutions to a number of challenges. I want to remind everyone to not miss the Icons of Animation. The show at the Carroll Arts Center and McDaniel College is extraordinary. It's, it's a show. It's a major art exhibition and it really should not be missed. It spans the 20th century with over 150 pieces of original animation art. It's the largest of its kind in the nation. It's in Westminster. Also, coming up on January the 29th, the Black History Musical Review Freedom Songs will be at the Carroll Arts Center. This is a professional touring theater company and it'll be here to help us celebrate Black History Month. And this is also to help us out with the, the cancellation due to the inclement weather on, when it was previously scheduled. I think that's my report. Keep checking with the, the website. The website's done very well. I think that's my report. Keep checking with the website. The website's done very well. And that's my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. And now we'll go to economic and community development, Mr. Huff.
Yes, thank you. We had a meeting on Thursday, January 20th. We discussed several items. Text amendment related to breweries that is in the works, some water allocation category adjustments that will probably be coming our way at some point in the future, some future annexations, as well as some of the progress that has been made so far with the Sign Ordinance Committee that's been working on updating our sign ordinance. Our next economic and community development meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 16th at 3:30. Hopefully, we will be meeting live at 45 West Main, although it could be Zoom, depending upon the status of everything going on with COVID at the time. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Huff. And I don't have anything to report from the Finance Committee, except that, you know, the preparation work on the budget is underway. And we're looking forward to, we had some good conversations with the city administrator about it. Very pleased that, you know, in the absence of a full-time finance director, we have procured the services of an interim finance director through a accounting firm, and they're working out very well. Doing a great job for us and taking a big load off of the city administrator, you know, in the time until we get to hire new director. The search is underway for that, and let Ms. M. Hulse talk about that, if she has anything to put on that later. But just glad that we have, you know, some help to manage a lot of different activities in finance while we're waiting for that to take place. Personnel Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Cavachi.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have a few things. First off, I'd like to congratulate, I apologize, Corporal Jesse Claggett and Jennifer Quick. Corporal Claggett earned the Officer of the Quarter Award for the last quarter, I guess, of 2021. And Jennifer Quick earned the Civilian Employee of the Quarter designation for the same time period. So congratulations to both of them. One thing I'd like to note is, since 2018, the Maryland Police and Training and Standards Commission has required each police agency in the state to provide a bunch of reporting detail and information about, you know, what they're doing. And I want to read a little excerpt from the information we received back from that commission. And that commission said, "Your agency's report serves as a wonderful model and clearly demonstrates a strong understanding of best practices in community policing for an agency and community of your size and demographics." And then they go on to say, "Therefore, we have no other comments in terms of recommendations. Once again, you've demonstrated a strong understanding of community policing and its best practices." That's, you know, coming from a state commission like that, you know, there are hundreds, I believe, hundreds of police agencies within the state. You know, all the small municipalities, counties, I mean, certainly probably at least 100 or more. And I can assure you that few of them received feedback like that, if any. And it just goes to show what a wonderful job the chief and his senior staff are doing, and as well as, you know, the rank and file officers doing their job when it comes to what I think we all want, which is strong community policing and connectivity with the community. And I think we really see that. And that dovetails with a letter that we received, PFC Corey Taylor and dispatcher Mark Franklin. Both were dealing with a situation, there was a call for service where an individual was in some need. I'm not gonna go into details of what it was about, but someone took the time that was involved in that and wrote a letter. And this is becoming a theme almost. It seems like almost every meeting I have one of these to read. So it goes right back to what we were, what I was just talking about. The two of them received a letter talking about the wonderful job they did and how it was clear, you know, that they care about the community and showed compassion and caring for the individual that they were trying to help. So congratulations to both of them, and thank you for a job well done. I think that's all I have on the public safety front. Chief probably will have a couple of other things, so I'll leave it at that. So thank you, Mr. President.
Right, thank you, Mr. Cavachi, and Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff.
No report. I thought that perhaps I would, we had a meeting, we had a meeting last week, it was a very good meeting. But I thought I would defer to the mayor and Councilmember Huff to maybe mention some of the funding that came through for the Wakefield Park. And it was a lot of really hard work by those folks and staff and the city administrator, and I really appreciated it. That's all I've got. So good.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff, and I have nothing from the Technology Committee, except that we'll be following up to talk with Mr. Dodge. Now, council comments and discussion. This is the time when council members.
Mr. President. Yeah, we skipped over Public Works, and I don't wanna leave those guys out.
I'm sorry, I thought we did that, Mr. Cavachi. Go ahead, please.
No, that's okay. It'll be brief, I promise. We've had a couple of snow incidents. They've done a heck of a good job. So we're appreciative of that. The water tower up at McDaniel is mostly complete. It's not all the way complete, and that is a public works-related item. As I think I've mentioned before, and I know the mayor and I, when we kinda worked out this deal, we were pretty excited. It's saving, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars not to have to paint that ourselves. So that's a good thing. One other quick note, and this will be it. We are making some headway on that PFAS issue with that one well that had some contamination that we took offline. So it looks like we've made some good positive movement in terms of mitigating that and getting things squared away with that. So that's some good news from Public Works. So that's it, Mr. President.
That is good news. Thank you, Mr. Cavachi. And I apologize for skipping Public Works. We certainly don't wanna do that. As I was about to say, council comments is an opportunity for council members to raise any issues that are not part of their regular committee reports, and we'll start with Mr. Cavachi on that.
So, Mr. President, I just would like to take a quick moment and kind of follow up with what Councilmember Dayhoff alluded to. You know, it's not a done deal. We don't have the money in pocket yet, but it looks positive. But I'd like to compliment Ms. M. Hulse and Councilmember Huff on the job they did, because they were really probably the two main driving forces behind us receiving which potentially could be about $1.3 million in grant funding for three projects that we have here in the city that they were able to work with our delegation, who we're very grateful to, to get these items into the governor's budget. So I'd just like to take a moment and say thank you to them for a job well done. It's something we probably haven't done enough of in the past. We probably need to do more of in the future. And I'd like to say thanks to both of them for the hard work that they did. I know others participated as well. And the mayor played a role in that, went out and did some things as well. So I don't wanna overlook anybody, but they ran point on it. So I just wanted to say thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cavachi. Mr. Dayhoff.
Yeah, the advocacy for the Wakefield Valley and the park and the clock tower and the splash pad, I think it was spot on. I'm very, I'm very good friends with a number of folks in the Maryland General Assembly, and I served on the Legislative Committee a number of years ago with the Maryland Municipal League. And you could teach a class with how well the advocacy for the being included in the governor's capital budget by Ms. M. Holtz and Councilmember Huff and the mayor, it was done extremely well. I also remain having a very keen interest in the Wakefield Valley Conference Center, and I'm really happy that the mayor brought it up. And I wanted to echo Mr. Cavachi's remarks, thanking the Public Works Department for their hard work during the recent winter weather events. I, years ago, to help bring in money during the winter when I farmed, I did snow removal, and it's not fun. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Ms. Gilbert.
Oh, yes. I just wanted to let everyone know that I and Councilman Dayhoff was in attendance with the first Ellsworth Cemetery meeting on January 12th. It was very well organized. I was impressed with the folks that were leading the charge to organize, renovate, and maintain the cemetery. Diane Botcher, and excuse me, Diane, if I botched your last name. Just close, I think it was Botcher, is heading the organization at the moment. I brought up and questioned the intent and need for them to be annexed into the city. The annexation will at least allow them the opportunity to apply for some historic heritage area grants, thus helping with the perpetual care of the cemetery. Annexation can also get the story out about the cemetery, so that they can find the history of many of those folks that are buried there since the county many, many years ago removed many of the headstones and destroyed a lot of the history of that cemetery. So I kind of am just bringing this up at council comments, so that possibly Ms. M. Hulse could add this to our list of future council agenda items, so that we can work on deciding whether or not we can annex the cemetery into our city. I know the former mayor was at our last in-person meeting and brought up the topic, and it was additionally brought up. I think it was back in January of 2019 by Mr. Gordon, and both times, the council at the times were in favor of this. So I just wanted to bring that up and see if we could push this on a little further on our agenda items. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gilbert. And I'll just, you know, add my thanks to, you know, the Public Works guys and Public Safety people who've done a great job over the last few weeks as we've been struggling with a number of different issues in the city. But I just wanted to mention something else that happened here that, you know, disturbed me a little bit. A lot of people in the community have noticed over the past couple of years that the Be Kind signs have popped up around our community and wider. You know, you see them driving around Frederick or on your way to Annapolis or other places. And it's always been a pleasure to me to know that when I see them elsewhere, that they started here in Westminster. And, you know, I think, and, you know, it's a great story of how it's turned into a little cottage industry here, you know, producing those signs and spreading what I think is a really good message. Somebody defaced a lot of these, you know, signs around town a few weeks ago, and it just made me wonder, you know, what's your message if you're against being kind? I'm just really, really sorry to see that, and I hope that the people who did it, the person who did it, you know, is able to, you know, deal with the issues that obviously brought them to do something like that. I hope they don't see it again. I know that the Be Kind, you know, Infinite Love Project folks are trying to get some of those signs cleaned up and replaced, and I'll be glad, I want to see them back around the community again. And that's it for council comments and discussion.
Mr. President, you actually skipped over me. So first off, I.
That's what happens in these virtual meetings. I apologize.
I totally agree with you about the B sign. You know, that was a horrible thing. And it was very nice to see them go ahead and put them back up. I give them a lot of credit. They have a very good attitude about it. So a lot of credit to them. And I also, just for the viewing public's benefit, number one, I appreciate the shout-outs related to, you know, all the work that's been going on behind the scenes. But so just for the viewing public's benefit, and it's not a done deal until we get through session in April. But the governor's proposed budget includes $1 million for Wakefield Valley and $200,000 for the restoration of Clock Tower, which is quite frankly, more than I was, you know, maybe expecting. But it's been great teamwork all the way around. The staff, when we met with the delegation, you all remember that meeting. The staff did a terrific job with their presentations. There has been numerous phone calls going around back and forth between myself and Senator Reedy, numerous emails going back and forth between the mayor, Ms. M. Hulse and myself, and with Senator Reedy again. And just, it's been very collaborative. It's kind of what politics should be about, quite frankly, which is everybody working together to help the citizens that we serve. So I really appreciate, you know, particularly all the help that Senator Reedy and the rest of the delegation put forward with, you know, getting this funding in the proposed budget, because that's a huge first step. And hopefully, when we are back here in April, it will be approved, and it'll be a great help to our citizens in Westminster, and will help us accomplish some real, real important things. I know that people would love to see that clock tower restored, and people would love to see us make progress on Wakefield. So I really appreciate everybody's help and collaboration, because the reality is, it's everybody's involvement that made this happen, and everybody doing a good job and pulling together. So, thanks.
Right, thank you, Mr. Huff. And indeed, it is, it's been a good thing to have this kind of cooperation and appreciate you know, the staff for the follow-up and all the council members who were involved, and the mayor who were involved in this. And of course, you know, the support from the delegation, that's, it's very encouraging to have this kind of support. It's been a while since we chased money like this in the city, and I'm glad to see that we're able to do so successfully. There is no unfinished business, of which I'm aware. We have three items under new business. First is approval of the interagency agreement with the Carroll County Health Department. And for that, we'll turn to Chief Ledwell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As part of our collaborative initiatives to address the opioid epidemic, the Carroll County Health Department secured $79,000 in grant funds from the CDC's Overdose Data to Action Program to fund either a clinical social worker or a case manager position to work out of the police department and assist with our response plan to drug overdoses and follow-up efforts. The included Maryland Department of Health, Carroll County Health Department Interagency Agreement outlines the terms for this provision. There are no costs to the city other than providing the office space and equipment for the position. The police department already runs our lead, our law enforcement assistant diversion team in a dedicated office space here at police headquarters, which would also accommodate this position. The Health Department would supply a peer in recovery to work with this case manager. Having this additional support team would allow the police department to provide greater coverage and intensive services to community members in need, and would allow us to staff a quick response team for overdoses. Having these additional support services working in conjunction with our police officers is a best practice that would free up our police officers for other duties. Therefore, staff recommends that common council authorize Mayor Becker to sign this grant-funded case manager agreement on behalf of the city of Westminster to provide a case manager position who would assist the police department with addressing the opioid epidemic.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. All right, I have a motion to approve the interagency agreement.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Cavachi and the second by Ms. Gilbert. Any discussion or any questions for the chief?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavachi.
So, Chief, this grant would probably fund that position for one year, I would assume. Is that is that about what that dollar amount would equate to?
That's correct. It's $79,000 for the fiscal year remainder. And then, within the agreement, there's a one-year renewal clause. And the leaders at the Health Department have assured me that this is what the intent of these funds are for, and they're fairly confident that it would continue on through the next fiscal year.
And there's no, not that I'm trying to telegraph that we would not do it, but there's no requirement on the city's part to continue beyond what grant funding would cover in the future, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, of course, we would hope that maybe we can continue to receive that grant if it's working well. But, okay, great. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Cavachi. Anyone else?
Councilman Cavachi kind of addressed what my question was about. It appeared from reading through it that it was for this year, and it appeared that it was going to happen next year. But beyond that, Chief, you know, it's too uncertain as far as what happens past that. But, you know, the fact that we're getting these funds. But, you know, the fact that we're getting these funds, at least for, you know, the remainder of this fiscal year and next fiscal year, is a huge benefit. So, I mean, I think it's great, wonderful. So.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Yeah, I wanted to weigh in also in, in support of this. Councilwoman Gilbert and I attended a seminar. When was it, Councilwoman Gilbert? A couple of years ago at the MML with this approach. This approach has been very successful in other municipalities throughout the state. And it's also modeled somewhat after the, the domestic violence grant that we got 20, 25 years ago that's been very helpful in countering the challenges with domestic violence. When there's an incident at a household, our police department shows up at the house shortly afterwards and wants to see what's going on in that household. And I think this will be a huge help with the opioid epidemic, and I wholeheartedly support it. I'm really thankful that our folks and Chief Ledwell have pursued it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Gilbert.
I'll weigh in a little bit also on this. I know with, given the work that I do, I often refer a lot of, of my clients over to the, to the peer support workers at the health department. So I am excited that we are adding this aspect of this to our, our city police department, and I'm looking forward to seeing the success that this program will, will give to the folks that we work with directly in the city. So I'm excited to see this collaboration and this additional work and additional workforce. So I'm excited to see this. Thanks. And thank you.
Thank you. All right. Everybody's had a chance to weigh in. Presume you're ready for the vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed to say nay, the aye seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the agreement is approved. Chief, thank you very much. The next item is approval of change order number one for the contract with Boulevard Contractors Corporation. Ms. Gruber.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you may recall, on October 11th, the city authorized a contract to be signed with Boulevard Contractors Corporation as the general contractor for the Westminster Family Fitness Center Locker Room renovation project. When reviewing the scope of the project during a pre-construction meeting, several items were identified as necessary additions to adequately complete the project and produce the best results possible. Of those items, the change order reflects a change in the countertop material from plastic to granite and an extension of that countertop in the men's locker room only from where it currently stops the hallway to the wall. The actual discussion around why the material should be changed is because we have specked undermount sinks, and the plastic cannot be cut. So plastic can't be cut in a unified manner, and so granite becomes the better material when installing undermount sinks. Additionally, the addition of a frameless mirror in the men's locker room, which would extend across where that countertop extension will go, replace the counter-mounted soap dispensers, which are very difficult to remove and fill with surface-mounted automatic soap dispensers, replacing the coke base in the men's locker room, because we are replacing the floor in there. They didn't think that the coke base would survive. And then, of course, the change order also reflects a $0 change for an extension of time. Our lockers are a little over six months out to receive, so the contract would need to be extended by 25 weeks. If all of these items in the change order are agreed upon, it will result in an increased total cost to the contract of $2,507.10, and obviously, it will alter the contract time for completion. With all of that being said, staff does recommend that the city authorize Boulevard Contractors Corporation to perform the work identified above through the approved execution of change order number one. And I am happy to answer any questions if you have them.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gruber. I have a motion to approve change order number one.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number one.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Mr. Hoff and a second by Mr. Cavaci. Is there any discussion or questions for Ms. Gruber?
Mr. President. I just have a technical question as far as, you know, we're only talking about $2,500 here, but what bucket is it coming out of as far as, because that was an address in the memo. A lot of times the memo will say, you know, where we're getting the additional funds from. So I just want clarity on where that's coming from.
Sure. So this project actually came in under budget. The budgeted amount in the fiscal year 2022 budget is $65,000. So even with the $2,500 addition, you're still coming in well under budget at a contract, an adjusted contract total of $44,692.10.
Well, that'll make Councilman Cavaci very happy.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. Thank you, Ms. Gruber. Any other questions? Hearing none, let me ask. So, Ms. Gruber, I confess shamefully that it's been too long since I've been in the fitness center and tried to get myself fit. But I'm making my own efforts elsewhere. But what's, you know, so I take it that the locker rooms are not in operation right now? Is that the case? Are they not open? Or are they?
They are open. These are cosmetic improvements that will combat our lockers that are rusting through and the bathroom partitions as well are rusting through. Our countertops are delaminating and stained from hard water. So it's just necessary upgrades from locker rooms that I believe are renovated last in perhaps 1996.
All right. Are the showers working in the men's locker room again?
Yes, the shower rooms were renovated last fiscal year, and
We did get that completed. Okay.
Yes, we did. Yes.
Okay, very good. So this 25-week extension does not impact the usefulness of the locker rooms? In that they're open, although maybe, you know, you don't have nice new locker seats just yet.
That is correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Hearing no further discussion, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving change order number one, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed to say nay, the aye seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the change order is approved. We have another item under new business, but without objection, we are going to defer consideration of that until after what is anticipated to be a recess for a closed meeting. So, and with that, do we need, so we're doing this a little bit differently. I apologize for stopping to ask a question, but do we need to wait to make that motion until after we've done everything else? Normally, we do it at this time. Mr. Barber is our new city clerk, and I think this is his guidance on the
Yes, sir. So you're not going to go into closed session yet? So you can make the motion when you go into closed session, right, right after department reports and citizens comment? Then you can do the motion to go into closed.
All right. Well, we will, we'll do it your way. We'll wait a few minutes.
Mr. President, if I could real quick, I need, I never received that document to do that. So you could email that over to me quickly, please, so I can make that motion later on. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Unless the text of the, what's the motion in the
It's on the, the motion's on the agenda.
I think that may be all you need, Mr. Cavaci. We don't need to read everything else we used to read. All right. So departmental reports. Ms. Imholtz, would you like to lead us through that?
Yes, thank you, sir. And looks like I'm not on mute. Okay, great. We are busy in the middle of the budget season, and I'm meeting with the department heads and their staffs to, you know, this is my first year, so getting to know the operations in detail and the operational needs and the financing needs as well. I just want to take a minute while we're in the middle of the winter and the middle of the snow season to thank our essential employees while everyone is essential and important. We have a couple of essential departments, namely the police department and the public works department. So when it snows, you all know this, you have to clear your own driveway, you have to clear your own sidewalks. But our employees are not home taking care of that. They're in the city, taking care of the city. And so as the snow piles up at their own house, they're having to implore someone else to do that, right? And so instead of taking care of their own house, they're taking care of our house here at the city. And I just want to take a moment to thank the police officers who come in for that and to thank the public works department. There are numerous employees that are involved in snow removal and in various types of emergency situations that we have. They get thanked a lot, but they don't always get thanked, I think, for, you know, leaving their families at home, leaving their properties at home and coming in and taking care of that for us. So I want to take an opportunity to thank them. And with that, we're going to start with the police department. Chief Ledwell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The one item that I want to add on to what Councilman Cavaci talked about earlier is last week, we had the Quarterly Maryland Chiefs of Police Association meeting. And the main topic of discussion was the upcoming legislation that was born out of the Maryland Police Reform Legislation Packet, several bills that take effect on July 1 of this year. So the, the principal ones are the repeal of Law Enforcement Officers' Bill of Rights and the replacement with the Police Accountability Board and the Charging Committee. And then also, there's some requirements for not only applicants to go through a psychological assessment, but also for every other year for every sworn police officer to have a psychological assessment in addition to an annual physical assessment. So we talked about, as we're going into the budget, you know, what we need to budget for the evaluations. And the, the director of the Police Training Commission is currently drafting framework for both of those things. But they assured us that the psychological assessment is more of a resiliency assessment as opposed to a full psychological evaluation that we undergo when we're applicants. And that'll be a less costly consideration. I posed the question as far as the qualifications of the person doing the assessment. Would it have to be a psychologist, or could it be a licensed professional counselor? Something of that nature. And the legislation was silent on that matter, so they're going to look into it. But we're preparing for, and Mr. Landsman, who we just recently hired as our police administrative services manager, is, is making sure that we're getting up to speed with all of our policies and plans so that we're in full compliance as July 1 rolls around. And there are a number of other smaller mandates that kick in on July 1. But those are the two major ones. And we had a few that went into law effective October 1 of '21, and we've gotten ourselves up to compliance with all of those policy-wise and training-wise. So that's all I have to report on tonight, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Thank you, Chief. We will move on to the HR department. Ms. McCullough.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Currently, the city's Human Resources Department is recruiting for various positions at various levels across all departments. To apply for these positions, please go to the city's website. The city, the city of Westminster is a great place to work. That completes my report.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough.
Thank you all.
All right, we're moving on to the planning department. Mr. Depot.
Evening, everyone. On January 13th, the Planning and Zoning Commission conditionally approved Site Development Plan S-29 for Valvoline Instant Oil Change. This is located at the corner of Route 140 and Gorsuch Road. So finally, we got this done. The Winter's Farmers Market is scheduled to open on Saturdays from February the 5th to April 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And this is, again, located at 29 West Main Street, and that's the Stockdale property. And that completes my report.
Does anyone have any questions for the planning department?
Yeah, Ms. Imholtz.
Sir.
Yeah. Mr. Depot, so for the Valvoline Quick Chain, Quick Lube Center, so that's the last step that we can expect to see shovels in the ground, you think relatively soon on that?
I, I know they're anxious to start, so that would be the hope. They have not submitted any building permits or demolition permit at this time. But my hope is with this final step, they should be moving forward rather quickly.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a little while for them, so I'm sure they, they are anxious. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Depot. We will move on to the housing department. Mr. Brown.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I just have two items I want to report on. The first of, which is that we have begun in-person inspections of some of the houses that are on our program. We're taking the necessary precautions, including making sure that our staff is masked, that the landlords and the residents are masked, and that we're observing appropriate social distances. We've also just completed, I think, yesterday, yeah, yesterday, we completed getting out all of the 1099s to our landlord vendors. And I'm just so thankful that that's so, it was, it was a chore, but it's done. So that's all I have to report this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to the Recreation and Parks Department. Ms. Gruber.
Good evening. Only one thing to report this evening. We are working on our first major event for 2022. Plans are in place for the Celtic Cancer Irish Festival and Pub Crawl. I am happy to report that we will be returning this event to Main Street this year. Of course, last year, we did hold the 5K run only out at Wakefield Valley Golf Course in response to the pandemic and trying to operate a safe, large-scale public event at the height of everything that was going on. So our schedule now looks like the 5K run will be stepping off at 9:00 a.m. with the Children's Leprechaun Chase to follow at 10:00 a.m. And we are going to also have the 0.5K this year, which we were hoping to have in 2020. That's for those of you who aren't quite ready to run the full distance of a 5K. You only run 0.5K. That will be at 11:00 a.m. And we have live entertainment that will be playing on the library stage from 9:30 to 12:00 noon. The trolley will begin running at 12:00 noon to all participating bars and restaurants. We are currently in the process of working out what specials will be offered with distributing company. And so all of those details will be forthcoming. The event is up on our website. We are currently taking registrations for the run. And right now, we have over 300 runners registered for the 5K. So we are certainly happy to be returning this event to Main Street and are excited to be able to host the pub crawl portion of this to, you know, give our bars and restaurants a little bit extra business for the weekend before St. Patty's Day. So that concludes my report, unless there are questions.
Okay, I want to just
Sorry.
No, go ahead. Sorry.
I was just going to make one recommendation for Ms. Gruber, that next year, maybe we could do a .005K. That would be about 50 yards. I'm in for that one. That would be about 50 yards. I'm in for that one.
I was, I was, this, I was going to ask Mr. Kabachi to do the point five with me. I thought, oh, we can both manage that.
It's, it's like six football fields. We probably could do it.
I just want to take a moment to thank Ms. Gruber for her initiative and leadership in, um, seeking the grant funds for the splash pad. And that was an important project to the Recreation and Parks Department. Obviously it was an important project to the city. Um, and we're always looking for additional funds that we can find to supplement, uh, some of the city funds that sometimes we have to put in for. So I want to thank Ms. Gruber for that. Our final report tonight, our second to final report, sorry, Mr. DeHaave, uh, will be from, um, Public Works Department, Mr. Glass.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Um, just a short report to thank you for the kind words about the essential personnel. And I'll answer any questions anybody may have, but, uh, that's really all I have to report this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for Public Works? Thank you, Mr. Glass. Appreciate it. Councilwoman Kate DeHaave, do you have a report from the fire department?
Yes, ma'am. Um, we're still running EMS, uh, services are still running to capacity. Um, and it's been quite challenging. We have upstaffed or, or in the process of, of working on upstaffing, trying to get another medic unit on the road, uh, but we're, we're running a lot of calls. Um, and, um, if there's anything the public can do, the best way to support, uh, public safety these days would be to wear a mask and make sure that you get a vaccination and to, to make sure that, um, that those calls to, to 911 are in a life-threatening situation. Um, I also wanted to, to mention that, uh, we did fight a, a major fire in the city of Westminster. Um, the date's not coming to me. It was perhaps last week, um, out in the greens. It was, uh, excellent work, uh, on the part of our, um, of the fire service. Um, it was a, an end unit on a, a rowhouse, uh, um, townhouses. And, uh, it was an excellent stop. The fire was very intense. It was a great fire. It was a, it was a big fire. And it stopped dead right there on the end unit. As a matter of fact, when, as we were leaving the scene, uh, the folks in the next unit were able to go back into their unit. I also have, uh, two very sad notes to report and, uh, wanted to read into the record, uh, if I may, um, a, a statement on behalf of the mayor and council. We've had two line of duty, uh, well, we've had a line of duty death in Carroll County. Uh, Bobby Jones died of COVID. Um, and, uh, today, this morning, we had, uh, uh, three firefighters die in Baltimore City fighting a fire. So I wanted to read into a record, uh, if it's okay with everyone. Um, our condolences on, on behalf of, uh, city government and, uh, the fire department. Um, on behalf of the men and women of the Westminster, uh, mayor and common council, Westminster City Government and Westminster Fire Department, we wish to express our deepest sympathies to the Reese Volunteer Fire Company and the family, friends and colleagues of Reese Paramedic and firefighter, uh, Robert A. Jones. He died on, uh, January the 20th, 2022 of COVID-19 that he contracted in the line of duty in December of 2021. Uh, many of us were very good friends with, uh, with Bobby Jones and his death has been extremely upsetting to the fire community. And we're also very upset about the, the death of the three firefighters in Baltimore City. Uh, many folks may not be aware, um, a lot of firefighters who, uh, work in Baltimore City actually live in Westminster and we had Westminster firefighters on that scene. Uh, we had, we had, we had firefighters, we had Baltimore City firefighters who live in Westminster on that scene. Uh, this morning I, I had the opportunity to speak with a couple of them. And I guess our statement would be, we would like to express our deepest sympathies to the friends, family and colleagues of the three firefighters that died this morning fighting a fire in the Mount Clare neighborhood of Baltimore. Lieutenant Paul Buttram, firefighter paramedic Kelsey Sadler and EMT firefighter Kenny Lakaya all died when there was a catastrophic collapse of a townhouse, uh, this morning. One firefighter remains at shock trauma. That's, uh, EMT firefighter John McMaster. And he remains at shock trauma. So we owe them our deepest respect and gratitude and we, um, and, uh, wanted to thank you for the opportunity to share these thoughts. That'd be my report, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. President, one final thing. I just want to take the opportunity to thank our new city clerk, Mr. Barber, uh, who's been making sure that we're following all the state laws. Um, and just, he has jumped in from day one. And we've been very thankful for all his support, um, and help. And with that concludes our departmental report, sir.
All right. Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Imholtz. Uh, the next on our agenda is citizen comments. When we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other city issues, until we meet in public again, which we hope will be very soon, we invite, uh, people to send us their comments or concerns via email at comments@westminstermaryland.gov. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. Commenters should include their address and phone number with their comments. And I just wanted to note that, uh, we did receive, uh, several comments, uh, over the last, uh, day or so, which have been, uh, forwarded to, uh, all of your email inboxes, um, basically on two subjects. One was, uh, uh, support for, um, magic and, um, some of the things that Mr. Dodger was talking about. You'll have a chance to read all of those. And the others were asking, you know, raising concerns about, uh, the proposed, um, you know, project at 82 West Main Street. And you'll be able to see those as well. And so now, um, I think it is time, Mr. Kabachi, for your motion.
Sure, Mr. President. Let me get to that. And it's 82 East Green, uh, West Green Street, not Main Street. Just
I'm sorry, I meant sure. I apologize. Thank
That's okay. Uh, so I'd like to make a motion that the common council adjourn to a virtual closed meeting at the conclusion of the mayor and common council meeting held right now in accordance with the general provisions article of the annotated code of Maryland 3-305B Section 8 to consult with staff, uh, and/or other individuals about pending or potential litigation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah, I was, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Kabachi and a second by Mr. Hoff. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it. So the council will now go into a recess, uh, briefly for this, uh, closed session. Um, I would just mention that, uh, for those interested in, uh, seeing the conclusion of the meeting, uh, we will leave this channel open. People can stay online and continue to watch and, uh, the mayor and council will return, uh, to this, um, to this channel when, um, we've concluded the closed session. For the mayor and council and anybody joining us for the closed session, I ask you all now to switch to exit this meeting and switch to that one. And we will see you all there in a few minutes and, uh, meeting is recessed. Council back into its regular session. And, uh, we have, um, one, we'll go back to our new business and to, uh, item C, which was resolution. And, uh, is, um, relating to a proposed opioid litigation.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Kabachi.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to adopt resolution R-2201, a resolution of the mayor and common council authorizing the city attorney to execute national settlement agreement with Jansen, also known as Johnson and Johnson, and the distributors in the opioid litigation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kabachi. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been a motion by Mr. Kabachi and a second by Ms. Gilbert to, uh, introduce and adopt, uh, resolution number 22-01. Any discussion? Hearing none, move on to a vote. All those in favor of, uh, introduction and adoption, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it and the resolution is introduced and adopted. Okay. And, uh, I believe that concludes our agenda and the meeting. Our next regular meeting will be held on Monday, February 14th, better known as Valentine's Day. Uh, I hope that we'll be back in person for that meeting, but we will, uh, publish that, uh, notice, uh, in the week prior to the election, to the meeting. And with that, without objection, we are adjourned. Please stay safe and healthy. Thank you all very much. Good night.